The sixth day of the fourth special session of the twenty-first Congress will now come to order. May we all stand for a moment of silent prayer.
Senator Aritas, Senator Christian, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coland, Florida Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Palick, Senator Berman, Senator Romolo, Senator Rosmal, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, all the fourteen members are present.
We have a full hours and we have a quaranty transit business. Okay, Florida.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you again and all honorable members, staff, as well as those who are observing our session this morning. Again, I move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
It's been moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor say yes, opposed no, motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item.
Mrs. Speaker, item five Presidential Communications. Uh, we do not have any.
That is understandable because he's absent. And the nation, next.
Item six, uh, have some Supreme Court communications, none.
Point of privilege, Mrs. Speaker.
That is understandable because uh, our honorable Chief Justice is still quarantined in Guam. State your point, uh, Florida Harbor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I rise on a point of privilege to take this opportunity to introduce a very important person from the U S embassy. I believe he's the Assistant Defense Ataji. I'm sorry, I don't know what this means, but that's the title of this uh, person. His name is Chris Knight. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Florida Harbor for introducing a friend of ours and thank you for joining us uh, uh, this morning. Any other point?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Point of privilege.
State your point, uh.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members, and all those that are observing our session this morning. Mrs. Speaker, I rise on a point of privilege to recognize our Secretary of Finance that is also observing our session this morning. Secretary Eugene Moore. With staff Rob Solomon and um, soon to find out the rest of the um, staff's name. Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, uh, Chairman Berman for introducing uh, uh, two of the most valuable people during this Corona fighters crisis. I hope they continue working on accessing uh, donors' funding like World Bank and. Okay, any other point of privilege?
Here.
Yes, uh, Florida again.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Yeah, I'd like to rise again on a point of privilege to take this time again to introduce a few of our constituents who are also uh, key staff at the executive branch. Uh, they are Lauren Robert, uh, Special Advisor to the President, Professor Petrus, Special Assistant to the President, and Nakamasana, the director or whatever to the uh, banking board, if I'm r- if I am correct.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Florida Harbor again for introducing uh, our uh, defaulted uh, officials, employees. But I also noticed uh, a delegate from the northwest region is sitting there, so. Short resist, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session, uh, so no more point of privilege.
Of priv- privilege, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, uh, Florida Harbor.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I rise again on point of privilege to uh, extend my apology to Nakamasana for misatressing his title. I think he's the Commissioner of the Insurance. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Florida Harbor for try find that. If no further uh, privilege, next item.
Item seven, Mrs. Speaker, member communications, there are none.
Next.
Item eight, governmental communications. We have uh, communication number twenty-one dash fifty-four.
Okay, sign that. Next item.
Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, on receipt of number twenty-one dash forty-one.
Sign that, uh, take note, uh, Chairman Romo of that request by the President of the Khan Khan. Next item.
Item ten, state communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, also none. And item thirteen, foreign government communications, none.
Alright, we're now on the order of the day. Item fourteen, stan- s- fourteen, standing committee reports, first report.
Mrs. Speaker, the first report is standing committee report number twenty-one dash forty-three on functional resolution number twenty-one dash one hundred fourteen from your Committee on External Affairs for adoption.
Chairman, what uh?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number Twenty-one Dash Forty-three.
Any second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt Standing Committee Report Number Twenty-one Dash Forty-three. Short resist, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh, there is that motion which was seconded discussion on the report.
Speaker.
Chairman, what uh?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As indicated in the report, your nominee is very much educated and is ready to do the job of uh, as requested by him as T C M for uh, uh, our office in China. He speaks the language and write the language and is graduate of one of the college sits there. We did not do a confirmation hearing because of the uh, travel restrictions, but we have confirmed him in previous uh, position that he uh, was assigned for. Two things to consider here. If we don't, one is if we don't confirm this nominee, it would be deemed rejected in the next Congress. And also, uh, the second one issue is to who is, if we don't confirm this nominee, who is, who else is willing to travel to China at this time of year? So when we come to the nominee, please support him and uh, vote for him. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, uh, Chairman Wally. Any other discussion? Fewer, short resist. Short resist, subject to call of the chair. But the. Congress is back in uh, session. We're still discussing the report. Any further discussion on the report?
Speaker.
Chairman Romolo.
Thank you. I wanna raise a question on the statement made by Chairman of uh, External Affairs. I don't know if I hear him correctly, and I stand to be corrected on the statement where he say that we have confirmed this individual before. Is that what I was hearing? Are you referring to the individual in the report, twenty-one dash forty-three? Because I, if that's the, if that's cor- correct, then I have not been confirming this individual in the past four years.
I, I believe it's in the report, if you read the report. You don't have a copy, huh? That it was confirmed in the past.
Uh, Speaker, if I may follow suit with the I understand that this individual is a First Secretary, not in a, in a position where you have to be get the consent, advice and consent of Congress. So I believe this is his first nomination to the position that needs advice and consent of Congress.
I, I think otherwise, Mr. Speaker. I think Projectary is also confirmed by members of Congress.
Short resist, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still discussing the uh, res- uh, report. Any further discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's forward on the report. Those in favor of adoption of Standing Committee Report Twenty-one Dash Forty-three say yes. Abosed no, motion carried. Standing Committee Report Twenty-one Dash Forty-three is adopted by Congress. Next report.
Mrs. Speaker, we have Standing Committee Report Number Twenty-one Dash Forty-four on functional resolution number twenty-one dash one hundred fifteen from your Committee on External Affairs for adoption.
Okay, Chairman Wally.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the adoption of the said report.
So it's been moved and seconded and Congress adopt resolution number twenty-one dash forty-four. Discussion, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. The nominee has been working in the uh, office in China for over ten years now. As indicated also in the report, is very much educated and has the knowledge and experience to work in that capacity that it's been nominated for. Again, we have two con- things to consider here. We don't act on this nominee, it, it will be deemed rejected in the next Congress or today. And the law. And also if it is not confirmed, who is willing and able to travel to China at this time? Some members make question is age because uh, of the Asia culture of having diplomats that have been in local, state, and national government. They would rather have uh, older senior citizens that would be work in the capacity. But we don't want to send somebody that will not be able to here or climb the Great Wall of China. And when we have those countries sending their ambassadors to F S M, we don't have no say-so in who is there say- uh, sending us here to our country here. So we are reciprocating the work they do with their diplomats. We just reciprocating the same by not uh, in conform with their uh, culture and people that descend to us. So I would suggest that this is the act of Congress. Congress decide who to send whether they are in uh, concert with the culture that they're going to or not. But we should, we should confirm nominee that we feel is most qualified for the positions. So when it comes to vote, I would ask that everybody join me in confirming the nomination for the diplomatic position in China. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, point of order.
Chairman Wally, uh, state your point.
Mr. Speaker.
State your point.
I take great exception to Senator Willie using me as an example of a person who should not be appointed to a diplomatic position uh, uh, outside of F S M. I can still here and I can still climb the, the China Great Wall.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Senator uh, Christian for pointing that out, that age should not matter as long as you have the capability, you have the maturity and the integrity.
Speaker, just wanted to put it on record that twice been to Beijing.
Yes, Chairman Berman.
And I fully, fully support Francis Enafel and Vincent Sebas. So I'll be giving them my votes. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, uh, Chairman Berman. Uh, Chairman Figueroa, you have something to add?
I, I thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I just uh, I, I'm, I'm sure the chairman wasn't looking at Senator Christian, but he was looking at me. But I like, likewise, I can still climb the wall, I can still run, I can he- still hear. The, the question, and I think the statement that he made, the chairman made before was really ap- apply, uh, should apply to this uh, gentleman, to this nominee cause he's been uh, confirmed by this Congress. Though the nomination did not come originate from Congress, it came from across from the President following our constitutional uh, 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 oh, yeah, oh.
Let's move, let's move, let's move.
Well.
Continue, uh, Chairman Figueroa, you still have the floor.
And you people cut me off? No, the question, the real question I have on this nominee, and I think it's just for the record. I wondered if the receiving country has granted a, an aroma, aroma. Speaker. Yeah, if you wanna call it that way. Speaker. Are we in recess?
No, we are in session. Uh, Chairman Colan, discussion on the uh, report?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I don't have any question on the report, but uh, I personally support this nominee. I see the qualification that this nominee was assisting our leaders and I can tell the party that let's confirm this one if we happen to come to the resolution. No question. Thank you.
Are we in, uh, uh, recess?
Chairman, uh, Colan, we're in uh, session right now. Uh, you have anything more to add?
Short resist.
Short resist, subject to call of the chair.
Well, I, I.
Congress is back in session. We're still discussing the uh, said report. Any further discussion? If none, there is no objection. Uh, debate is closed. Let's vote. Those in favor of uh, adoption of Standing Committee Report Number Twenty-one Dash Forty-four say yes. Both no, motion carried. Standing Committee Report Twenty-one Dash Forty-four is adopted by Congress. Next report, Speaker.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, next item.
Item fifteen, Special Committee Reports, none.
Next item.
Item sixteen, Assemble Measures and Communications. We have a referral sheet number twenty-one dash fifty-five.
Okay, Chairman. Okay, Chairman, members uh of the committees, review that for your planning purposes. Next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item. Bill can enter.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Vice Speaker Moses.
I would like to move that we go down to item number nineteen on our order of business.
If there is no objection, we will now go down to item nineteen. That's the resolution calendar. Okay, first resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have a functional resolution number twenty one dash ninety five for adoption. C R number twenty twenty one dash ninety five is a resolution to make available ten million dollars from China current funding that is currently available to the Federated States of Micronesia to fund road improvements in Pompeii State.
Chairman Colin.
Uh with other respect to the proponent on the resolution, Mr. Speaker, uh I move to defer this resolution to tomorrow's uh calendar date. So move.
Uh it's been moved and seconded that resolution twenty one dash ninety five be deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Both no. Motion carried. Resolution twenty one dash ninety five is deferred to tomorrow's session. Next.
Mr. Speaker, the excuse me. Uh Mr. Speaker, the next one is uh Congressional Resolution number twenty one dash one oh eight for adoption from Ecomde and Wesamese. C P number or C R number twenty one dash one oh eight is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Secretary Eugene Amor to serve as a representative of the F S M government to the Joint Trust Fund Committee.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for the adoption of Congress Resolution number twenty one dash one zero eight.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty one dash one zero eight. Discussion.
Question.
Questions being called for. There is no objection. Debate is closed. To choose a nomination, it requires at least ten votes and the voting will be by secret ballot.
Speaker, can I just say something before we? May I?
Short recess.
Alright.
Congress is back in session. Uh Chief Clerk, announce the result.
Mr. Speaker, ten members voted uh for the nominee for a guest.
For that reason, resolution twenty one dash one oh eight is has been adopted by Congress. Uh Mr. Amor is confirmed as our representative to the F S M Compact Trust Fund.
Short recess, please.
Thank you very much. Yeah, short recess. Subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution number twenty one dash one twenty six for adoption. C R number twenty one dash one twenty six. It's a resolution urging the President of the Federated States of Micronesia to work with institutional leaders or I'm sorry, institutional lenders in the F S M to put in place measures to help borrowers in financial stress during the coronavirus crisis.
Okay, Chairman Figueroa.
Mr. Speaker. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty one dash one two six. Okay, discussion. Any further discussion? Uh Vice Chairman Palik.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you and members. I have uh offered floor amendment to the said resolution and I believe the amendment has been um printed and distributed. May I ask the Chief Clerk to read it?
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh Vice Chairman Palik, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for adoption of proposed amendment to resolution twenty one dash one twenty six. So move.
It's been moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to resolution twenty one dash one twenty six offered by Senator Palik be adopted because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. Uh.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, discussion.
Uh before you asked us for our votes, I again would like to reiterate for the record that I have a certain conflict of interest uh in the adoption of this particular bill. So I have a, my Eric Trump uh runs an ins- uh hotel, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh some more question or your comments? Any other discussion on the amendment, offered amendment? If there is no further discussion, no.
May I just ask the proponent of this amendment to explain?
Chairman Ursimal, you have the floor.
Thank you very much again, Mr. Speaker. And I'm gonna speak very slow since so I don't go high brand. Uh may I request the proponent of these amendments to explain in simple uh English to me since I have problem with the financial uh matters. I don't know how to save money. Uh what these amendments would do.
Okay, Vice Chairman Palik, can you please educate our?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um this amendment is simply to broaden the definition financial and lending institutions is a broader uh term that would include other lending institutions such as um for example in Pompeii Small Business Carenty Program. Or other lending institutions that issue commercial loans or facility. Cause I think it's not just the um commercial banks. But this is inclusive of other organizations that may be involved in lending. And um this amendment also takes out the specific identification of all the institutions but lump them together as one. And all those financial lending institutions that are operating and the term operating is important. They may not have offices in the F S M, but they have loan exposures or loan portfolios in the F S M. So one of the amendments is to take out those numbers of banks and just in uh in lieu thereof put financial and lending institutions. And that's generally what this amendment is um proposed to achieve. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palik. Is that?
Thank you very much again, Speaker. Uh there is no uh limitation or uh well how do I, how should I say it? There is no um yeah, limitation on who and what institution, financial or lending institution would be uh qualified to get assistance from this. For example, what do I mean? Uh like uh if I have a small uh, you know, the fly by the night loan uh uh thing.
That's illegal.
Huh? Uh well they, well that small uh lending uh institution qualify for help under this emergency declaration?
Senator Palik, do you understand that question? I don't. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still discussing the offered floor amendment. Uh. Questions? Questions being called for. If there is no objection, uh discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offer for amendments to C R number twenty one dash one twenty six offered by Senator Palik say yes. Both no. Motion carried. The offer for amendments to C R twenty one dash one twenty six by Senator Palik uh is adopted. We now have C D one. Any further discussion on C D one? Uh Vice Speaker Moses.
Thank you.
The floor has been yielded to you. Uh Chairman Ursimal.
Well, my uh mind is very uh just a technical correction on the resolution, so.
Proceed.
On the spelling, uh somebody already noted in the on the page. So on health, it's uh as was pointed out, it's misspelled. It's heat or something. So I would yield back the floor. I I take it that the staff can correct the spelling of health.
Okay, take note, staff of that technical correction. So you still have anything of vice? It's been moved. That debate be closed. If there is no objection, debate is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of Resolution number twenty one dash one twenty six, C D one say yes. Abuse no. Motion carried. Resolution number twenty one dash one twenty six, C D one is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mrs. Speaker, we have motion to Resolution number twenty one dash one hundred fourteen, C D one for adoption from your Committee on External Affairs attached to Standing Committee for Number twenty one dash forty three. C R number twenty one dash one one four, C D one is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Francis Anafel to serve as the Deputy Chief of Mission to the F S M Embassy in the People's Republic of China.
Okay, Chairman Wale.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have Kushan soup this afternoon. I move for the adoption of C R number twenty one dash one one four.
Take in. So there is a soup by the Kushan delegation. So it's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty one dash one one four, C D one. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Discussion on the resolution.
Mr. Speaker.
Florida Harbor first and Senator Christian.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I simply want to state for the record that I have not been able to notice nominee personally and professionally. But just because of the one quality that was mentioned by uh Chairman Wally regarding his uh uh being able to speak the language, Chinese language. And I don't know whether he is also able to write. That really makes me to support this person. I'm really proud of him as a Chinese spoken person. Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, uh Florida Harbor for your support. Senator Christian.
I'm just curious as to why we're confirming the second in command uh and not the ambassador first. Is there any particular reason?
No, uh it just come in the order that the the reports were received and.
Why did it come in that order?
Sometimes uh members uh were late in signing some of the other the reports. So depends on which one arrived first with the Chief Clerk. Any other discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed. It's a nomination. Again, at least ten votes are required. And we will be voting by a secret ballot. Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh Chief Clerk announced the result.
Mr. Speaker, unanimous, fourteen members voted for their nominee.
For that reason, Resolution number twenty one dash one one four, C D one is adopted by Congress. Mr. Anafel is confirmed as our Deputy Chief of Mission to our embassy in uh People's Republic of China. So next resolution.
Mrs. Speaker, we have we have congressional resolution number twenty one dash one one five, C D one for adoption from your Committee on External Affairs. C B N, our C R number twenty one dash one one five, C D one is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Vincent Sebas to serve as the F S M Ambassador extraordinary and plenty potentiary to the People's Republic of China.
Chairman Wale?
So move, Mrs. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt Resolution number twenty one dash one one five, C D one. Discussion. So no more soup on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have soup after the session. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the resolution? Questions being called for? If there is no objection, debate is closed. So this another nomination requires at least ten votes. And we will vote by secret ballot according to our rules. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Uh Chief Clerk announced the result.
Mrs. Speaker, thirteen members voted for one against.
For that reason, Resolution twenty one dash one one five, C D one is adopted by Congress. Mr. Sebas is confirmed as our ambassador to People's Republic of China. Okay, next resolution.
There are no more, Mrs. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker. Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh we're still on the resolution calendar. Uh Florida Harbor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to withdraw Resolutions Number uh twenty one dash one twenty twenty eight and twenty one dash one twenty nine to be placed on resolution calendar for action.
It's been moved and seconded that resolutions uh twenty one dash one twenty eight and twenty one dash one twenty nine be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Abuse no. Motion carried. Those two resolutions are now withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Okay, first resolution.
Mrs. Speaker, we have congressional resolution number twenty one dash one twenty eight for adoption. C R number twenty one dash one twenty eight is a resolution to make available five million dollars from China grant funding that is currently available to the Federated States of Micronesia to fund road improvements in Kushai State.
Okay, uh.
So, Mrs. Speaker, for its adoption.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution number twenty one dash one twenty eight be adopted by Congress. Discussion. The other Christian.
Short recess. I move that we defer action to tomorrow's calendar on this second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution number twenty one dash one twenty eight be deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Those in favor say yes. Abuse no. Motion carried. Resolution number twenty one dash one twenty eight is deferred to our tomorrow session. Okay, next resolution. Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have C B N, I mean congressional resolution number twenty one dash one twenty nine for adoption. C R number twenty one dash one twenty nine is a resolution to amend the President's Public Health Emergency Declaration dated January thirty first, two thousand twenty.
Speaker. Okay, Chairman Ramaluk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move that we defer action on these to tomorrow's agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution twenty-one dash one twenty-nine be deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no, motion carried. Resolution number twenty-one dash one twenty-nine is deferred to tomorrow's session. Next resolution.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. If there's no objection, we will now move back to item eighteen. That's the bill calendar. First bill. Chairman Ursimal, you have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, uh as we went into recess yesterday uh we were discussing before we do that, we were discussing my proposed amendment to C B number twenty-one dash one sixty-three. So.
Short recess.
Sorry, sir.
Congress is back in session na Chairman Ursimal.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I uh move to withdraw and place uh with all due respect to the chairman of the J N Go Committee, C B number twenty-one dash one seventy-five and place on the order.
It's been moved and seconded that C P number twenty-one dash one seventy-five be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Any uh okay uh the relevant rules are still suspended at this point, so there is no objection. Let's vote. Those in favor say yes, opposed no, motion carried. C P number twenty-one dash one seventy-five uh spin withdrawn from committee and place on the bill counter first reading action. Okay, Chief Clerk.
Speaker.
Yes, uh Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move to withdraw Congress Bill twenty-one dash one seventy-three from your committee on which means and put on the calendar for action.
Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. There is a motion which was seconded that C P number twenty-one dash one seventy-three be withdrawn from committee and place on the bill calendar for first reading action. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no, motion carried. C P number twenty-one dash one seventy-three is withdrawn from committee and place on the bill calendar for first reading action. Chief Clerk, first bill on first reading.
Mrs. Speaker, we have congressional bill number twenty-one dash one seventy-five for first reading. C P number twenty-one dash one seventy-five. It's a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number twenty-one dash nineteen as amended by Public Laws numbers twenty-one dash thirty-nine and twenty-one dash seventy-four by amending section six thereof in order to allow a recess to be called by the Constitutional Convention for up to three months due to the coronavirus emergency and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman uh.
Mr. Speaker.
Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh motion for uh passage, Ramelow.
Motion for passage on the said bill on the first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading C P number twenty-one dash one seventy-five. Discussion. Any discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa.
Yeah, just a uh cause I I saw a communication from the president of the Constitutional Convention complaining about some bills that were introduced and they had taken action on by this Congress without their knowledge. I wonder if this bill was uh clear uh by the convention, the president or any other member of the ConCon or delegates, that that is.
Yes, Chairman Figueroa. The complaint is regarding the first two bills that uh were entertained by us I mean introduced by uh myself. That's one fifty-one and one fifty-two. This one is one seventy-five and it is uh an outcome of uh what we learned from the ConCon itself that they would like to take their planning to take if we would allow them. Uh longer recess because of this uh emergency that we're in. Is that okay? Is that uh why you're doing this, Chairman Ursimal? Yes, okay. Any further discussion on the bill? If not, there is no objection. As Vice Speaker Moses first and uh Senator Palik.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh I appreciate the the uh introduction of this bill. Uh however, and how it's trying to minimize the use of its budget by not allowing uh allowances. However, would this and ca- be a cause for more travel since there will be extra travel since they will be going back into their uh in their jurisdictions and then I was wondering if it had any budgetary implications on that that they might uh need or might be a cause for a request in the future.
Thank you, yes. It would have a budget implications if they take up those travels that will entail uh you know using their uh budget. But as I've said, we have given them a budget. They must learn how to live within that. So we don't want to continue giving them money. This that's not the idea here. The idea here is to give them uh the uh recess so they can go back to their homes and stay put during this uh uh emergency. Okay, any other discussion? Palik.
Yeah, thank you, uh Mr. Speaker. Mine is uh just a minor technical uh correction on page one, line eighteen. That the Constitutional Convention, not the Congressional Convention.
Yes, uh it's a typo technical. Uh it is uh should be the Constitutional.
Yes, Speaker. I I was trying to be creating creative by combining Congress and Constitution.
Make us merge, huh? Married. Okay, uh.
Speaker.
Okay, uh Chairman Ramelow.
Thank you again. I wish this convention will not use these recess to to consultation where they will come back and ask for funding because they have gone out these three months to do midterm consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh that's a uh we can address those on second and final reading if you have any amendments that you'd like to propose to make sure that those concerns are uh you know addressed. Okay, any further discussion? If none, if there's no objection, debate is closed. Let's vote by roll call of members. First reading, Chief Clerk.
Senator Alritas, Senator Christian.
Hey, mine.
Senator Figueroa. Senator Coolant. Florida Harbor. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Nath. Senator Palik. Senator Perriman. Senator Romolo. Senator Ursmao. Senator Wally. Speaker Semenam. Mrs. Speaker, all the fourteen members voted for.
C B number twenty-one dash one seventy-five uh as as Congress on first reading. Next group.
Mrs. Speaker, the next bill is C B number twenty-one dash one seventy-three for first reading. C B number twenty-one dash one seventy-three. It's a bill for an act to add a new section one forty-five to title fifty-four of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated as amended to authorize the president to suspend the collection of the cross revenue tax during a state of emergency and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passes of the bill on first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading C P number twenty-one dash one seventy-three. Discussion. Any discussion? Chairman Ursimal.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I just wish to ask uh if this uh becomes law, it would give the president, would authorize the president to uh suspend collection of gross receipt tax. Uh is this for any and all emergencies? As the presidency is fit to suspend the collections or only a certain uh emergencies? Are there specific emergencies that taxes can be collected? And others that the need to suspend collection may be necessary?
Well, the language is clear. It says during an emergency declared in accordance with.
So I take it to mean in all carros emergency declaration.
Of course, but uh we do uh uh understand that the president in his wisdom will decide what kind of emergency will do this. Uh short recess subject to call of the chair. will decide what kind of emergency will do this. Uh, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session.
Mr. Speaker. Why the responsibility vested in me? I hereby move that we stand in recess, Mr. Speaker, until tomorrow at ten o'clock sharp.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Opposed no, motion carried. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning.